It went off really good with great weather. And this is our last meeting of the year. And so, as we reflect, it's been a really successful year in the city with the announcement of Brady Industries, announcement of the hotel. We're thankful for things going on in our city. Infusion Solutions, I'm thanking for you Blake. And our arcade is full, and so we have a lot to be thankful for in the city and look forward to the coming year. I also want to announce, I want to say I'm thankful that we have hired our new public information officer with Joanna King back there. She's our newest employee, and I'm thankful for her. She is very well qualified, and I let our video crew know that her claim to fame was she is a roller derby queen. And I said, if she can go around the corner on skates and elbow somebody in the mouth, she's a woman from the job. So, I'm thankful, but Merry Christmas to all of you that are here today.
Well, I mean, I'd just like to say health and happiness to all of you and Merry Christmas. Think about your blessings this time of year. We have many, all of us, no matter what. Look at the bright side, we have much to be thanked for in Ashland, Kentucky, and hopefully into your homes.
Mayor, I'm just going to echo those sentiments and also want to welcome our new Army Recruitment Center here in Ashland. That's Sergeant Paul Genie's back there. We did that ribbon cutting last week. A lot of things happening in Ashland. You mentioned Infusion Solutions, the Army Recruitment, all the announcements in terms of what is coming. And I'm excited about the future of Ashland in this region, and I think that I agree with you wholeheartedly. We have a lot to be thankful for, and we are very blessed.
Anyone else?
I'd just say that I want to thank everybody that's helped and done a good job, and I look forward to next year, and I hope that everybody has a great Merry Christmas, and everything is going to be the great next year that we can possibly have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stein can say that, we can all say that. God bless you.
I also want to share my gratitude to everybody that has worked so hard to make this year's success, whether the city employees or our citizens. We're all working for the greater good, and we've made some end runs this year. And it's been a pleasure working with each of you on this board. It's been a humbling experience at times, but it's also been a rewarding one. I look forward to this next year. Thank you all, Merry Christmas.
Anyone else? I do, let me just say, I appreciate these commissioners. It's a good group to work with, their hearts in the right place, and I'm blessed to work with them. And we'll go fight somewhere near a minute. But I think we all respect each other, feel good for each other. I can tell you, they're great to work with, and their hearts in the right place, and it makes my job go so well. But we're looking forward to next year. Okay, see you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got six topics I want to hit tonight, or this afternoon, excuse me. First off, I'd like to start with the heroes. If Officer McCormick and Officer Finley would please stand up, and please bear with me as I read this. On 19 August 2017, Officer McCormick was at the Boyd County Detention Center booking a prisoner. Officer McCormick heard radio communications within the center that inmates were overpowering deputy jailers attempting to get out of their cell. Hearing that the deputies were in danger, Officer McCormick immediately began focusing his attention to the escalating danger. Shortly after hearing the information, deputies were able to escape harm. However, at that point, all were alerted that a fire had arrived was beginning. Officer McCormick immediately notified APD Command of the need to assist and was given permission to engage. Officer Corey Finley was also arriving at the same time with the prisoner, began to also engage. While additional agencies were responding, Officers McCormick and Finley and other deputies took control of prisoners in the cell area and began to install restraint devices on them while other deputies extinguished the fire. The prisoners during the event were beginning to riot after the fire, and these officers along with other deputies were able to gain control. Other agencies began responding, and other inmates were taken under control, placed under supervision and security by multiple agencies until correction officials from Frankford could arrive and take control of the inmates. Officers McCormick and Finley engaged in an extremely dangerous situation, especially being outnumbered and with minimal defense tools. Their involvement engaging in the beginning of the event was key to getting control over the situation and most likely save lives. These officers were recognized by their peer officers and were recommended and received the Ashland Police Department Award of Meritorious Service. So, I want to publicly recognize you gentlemen, job well done, and thank you for your bravery, courage, and willingness to stand up. Also, want to, second topic is I want to echo Commissioner Guth with the welcoming of Ms. King onboard. She's hit the ground running, just for not only the board, but also for the community, just to let you know what she's focusing on. Right now, she's in the process of meeting all the department heads, understanding their roles, responsibilities, their missions and focus. She's working a very detailed customer-focused communication plan that's going to keep our citizens informed and also our board informed. It's going to include services programs, work that impacts the community via multiple platforms, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. You'll see a rollout of those in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be consolidated. We don't, terminology I use, we don't want to rush to failure. We want to make sure that the foundation on this is straight and that people go to their preference of their choice from social media for updates, and Ms. King is working that really, really hard, also including traditional media platforms. Numerous tasks associated with improving customer service, some things you've heard me talk about over the last couple of months, community surveys, she's working very hard on that, and then the infamous how can we help version 2.0. So, how we can help is working, to the best of my knowledge, pretty good. How we can help 2.0, I won't get into those details, it's going to be even more customer-friendly for our citizens. And just some near immediate feedback, the other night when we had the water break up on Tanglewood, there are people that were responding, giving us feedback on the engineering website. Those immediate responses came from Ms. King. What that did, the reason I'm telling you that, and you're going to see Ryan Eastwood back there doing a little happy dance, that enabled him to focus on getting the problem fixed and line the road crews to get, excuse me, the water crews to get that problem fixed. It was a great turnaround when he didn't run any problems that evening other than the actual waters. So, great job, welcome aboard, Ms. King. Next topic, I want to hit the third topic is 29th Street Belmont Project. This afternoon, we'll be publishing an updated schedule. What you need to know is that on December 18th, on Monday, Belmont will reopen to traffic. The surface will be gravelled with rough road signage from 29th to just south of Simpson Road. From now until February 18th, except for the next two weeks, construction of new sidewalks between Lexington and Belmont will occur. Two-way traffic on 29th between Lexington and Belmont will be maintained. However, there will be short closures on that road while construction vehicles come in. So, they'll be for a very short period of time, but we'll maintain two-way traffic on that. We aren't delaying that portion until after Christmas. So, the road will be wide open until after Christmas, so there will be no even temporary stops to help the businesses down on 29th. The schedule after that portion will be the same as we published in mid-October. The fourth topic I'd like to hit today is the Kentucky Retirement System. I'm sure everybody's been reading about that in the paper. What we believe our bill for employer contribution is for FY19 is $1.76 million. I think I mentioned in this form before that the city staff has worked on their initial ideas. We're going to be sharing that with the mayor and the commissioners over the next couple of weeks to get their feedback and their thoughts on where we're going to be going with that. I do want the community to know that we're continuing to look for ways to drive down costs, which we do. Supplies only for essential operations, overtime only authorized for life, health, and safety. Training and travel limited to required certification. So, belt tightening has been occurring, but we're going to continue to do that. We're also looking at each hire and scrutinizing that. We're not just going out to our authorized list and automatically hiring those positions. The next topic is longevity pay. You're going to see on the consent agenda tonight, or this afternoon, my recommendation for payment of longevity pay for December. This is the first installment. As all, many of you might know that every year, the board looks at this for longevity pay to the city workers. We do it in two installments. I just, I want to warn that given the crisis with the KRS right now, that we need to be cautious of thinking that's automatic in June on the second installment, given what happened with the KRS. And then the last thing I'd like to hit, Mayor and Commissioners, is received a lot of anecdotal feedback on not being able to reach the city via phone. And it's something that we're continuing to strive to get better on. We have, if you go to the city's website, go up to the top tab, mouse over "I Want To", and then beneath it is "Find a Phone Number." Every one of those phone numbers has been checked to make sure that who's on there is who you'll reach. The phone messages are accurate. If you're trying to reach Economic Development, it'll go to Economic Development if they can't pick up the phone. So, if you don't reach somebody on one of those lines or you have another problem, please let us know, let me know personally, and we'll attack immediately. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay, anyone else, anything else? We have representative from Blue Water here today, and about a study going for the city.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Craig Heisman, and it's a pleasure to be here, meeting the mayor, the commissioners, and we appreciate the opening that you had. It's that time of year where we are, we are all blessed to be here, and I'm just very proud to hear your opening prayer and the good year that you've had, especially with Brady and other things going on. It's very exciting for the community. Anyway, my role, this will be very brief, and I believe each of you should have a copy in front of you, and as you're aware, you have approved a contract. I am Blue Water Kentucky, and I want to just briefly go over what the scope is, the timetable, and then answer any questions, but more importantly, get from you any expectations that you, as an elected official or appointed official, would have for me that I should consider as we're going through this process. This is going to be a very quick turnaround in order for us, in order for me, to be able to get recommendations back to you in at least a preliminary form to help shape your fiscal 2019 budget. So, that's really the track record that we're on. So, let's look at this, on the front page, the second slide is essentially, I'm in this review phase, and I've broken it down into really two parts. One is what I'm calling the document and the operations review component, and essentially you can read those elements. I'm looking at your operating budgets, your current budgets, your past budgets, looking at your reports of record, your audits. There are a number of reports that are required by the Division of Water of Kentucky, looking at your water quality history, et cetera. So, that's what I'm planning through right now. Ryan has been very cooperative. We set up a Dropbox, and I'm planning through that information so I can quickly get a snapshot of where you've been over the past three to five years. So, that's essentially the first part. Second part is I've been asked specifically to kind of fast-track and focus in the capital area and specifically take a look at water. Your wastewater side is well-managed from my observation, feedback with your consent decree of your CSO program, but we now want to start looking at your water side. And part of those drivers are, I've been out to your plant, your storage, Ryan's been very, taking me to the field, introduced me, and I've got 35 years' experience on the water side, so I'm very familiar with the equipment, the standards, the processes. Specifically, what I'm looking at that is a concern, it's why I'm really here. My preliminary assessment is a macro level is essentially you have a very high number of main breaks for the size of your system on the miles, when you look at industry standards, and you're aware of that because essentially those impact customers every day. You also have a higher than normal water loss, or essentially what we call non-revenue water, non-metered water. And I suspect those two are related, they typically are. So, we're going to let a deeper dive right now on trying to understand what the drivers are. So, we turn to the next page, that's where our focus is going to be. And first, it will be on your capital improvement program, and are we doing an adequate job in making investment in your treatment, your pumping, your storage, and then out in your distribution system. And initially, it looks like we're going to need to make additional investment in our distribution system with replacing aging facilities, facilities that have gone beyond their useful life. Second, we're going to look at the operations and maintenance because we want to make sure that we're as efficient as possible in our operation, meeting the regulatory guidelines, our expectations, requirements, but also doing that in a safe manner and doing it in an efficient manner. So, that's the second part. The third, which I mentioned, is looking essentially at water revenue with the low-flow fixtures, with industry moving out, Brady is a positive reversal of that, but all of our businesses across this country are using less water on a per-unit basis, per cap or per-unit basis of production. So, we want to make sure that we're getting, maximizing the revenue under the existing rate base. We want to make sure every gallon of water is accounted for. So, that's the scope for number three. And then I'll also go to look at organizational reporting and how we as inside the water area, wastewater, can provide information to management, and ultimately to elected officials, to the governing body to make sure that we're managing this asset effectively. I'll provide recommendations to liberals. The way I work is, as we go through a particular area, I'll provide what I call a technical memo. That will go to the city manager and Ryan and department heads to be able to get feedback to make sure Ryan is in the right place, in the right ballpark, so to speak. And then what will happen, that feedback, I'll adjust those, and I'll assemble those. There might be three, four, or five of those. It'll come back in the form of a set of recommendations that will go to the city manager, and at the appropriate time, what will happen is, I would expect to come back to this body to present those recommendations to you. So, there'll be a feedback loop here to make sure that we're all on the same page. And then ultimately, those recommendations will be to the governing body. They'll make a decision on what you will implement based upon the resources that you have available, the money, the funding, the people, the technology, et cetera, that's available to you. I will do this both in written form as well as PowerPoint form. To look at the timeline, you can read the, we've already had a kickoff meeting. The key point here to meet your budget timeline schedule is my target is to deliver a set of graph recommendations back from March 1st and get some feedback on those. And then ultimately, we'll wrap all this up behind, the original contract had August, but we want to pull this back in to fit your time to give your budget schedule. There's a little bit of information here. You've already seen my qualifications. I'm really here to ask you, answer any questions, but also receive any expectations that you can have as a governing body. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions, comments?
Just quickly, you do a lot of consulting in cities, similar to us, or a little larger and smaller?
Yes.
Is there a norm, a national norm for water that we're losing? I mean, where do we stack up in the whole scheme of things?
There's two ways to look at that. There are regulated entities in Kentucky by the Public Service Commission, and what for water loss, their expectation is that you give a 10%. Now, they call that unaccounted-for water, which is both your metered water use, but also estimates of volume that you're using. And those numbers can be, estimates are in the judgment of the prepared estimate, whereas your metered water data is much better. So, that's one benchmark for the regulated side. You're municipal, so you're not regulated by the public, so the Public Service Commission, but that's a spot on the wall. That should be a long-term goal. You're right now in your metered water in the area 40% plus, and by any standard across the country, in the state of Kentucky, that's high. We've got to drill down and find out what is driving that. I'm not prepared yet to say it's reasonable to get to 15% or 20%. At some point, you get to a point that you could spend more money chasing gallons because the incremental cost because of your economy of scale and your production and this abundant Ohio River right out here, that it doesn't make sense to go from, say, 15 to 18. But we're not there yet. Clearly, we, in my opinion, we can do better, and the industry would expect, if you were regulated by PSC, you would be clearly on a path, they would be setting that expectation for you.
Obviously, the fact you're here, where this commission's committed to kind of enhance, so whatever it takes.
And the advice that I've given to other clients, especially smaller systems, smaller than you, that have similar, you're not the worst. I'm working with another community, two other communities in Kentucky that have over 50%. In some cases, over 60%. So, it is a challenge, and as we've gone through thinning resources with our economic situation from 2008 to 2013, essentially, in a lot of cases, our resources have been thinned out and priorities have not been able to be given to this area. Now that the economies are recovering, and we're being able to bring industry back, we want to make sure that we're focused on cutting that lost water, that non-revenue water, and getting that down. And I think right now, if I had to say, okay, what's your recommendation for a target? I think you're spot-on with saying, we got to get it down to 20% and then strive, but there's also return on the investment. And it will not occur, I can tell you right now, it will not occur in one year. It didn't get here overnight. It's going to take some time to plow through what are the causes, and then the investments that are needed, not just dollar investments, I'm talking investments in technology, in people, in processes, in training that will get us to that point. I suspect, I testified before the PSC, and I said, typically, this is a three-to-five-year process, and it may even take 12 months before you start seeing some results. And then a good example, if I could elaborate, is right now, you have, I mentioned this this morning in some of your finance books, is you have, the weakest links in your system are failing right now, and in some cases, they hemorrhage on a block. And you know that because customers call, they don't have water, low pressure, we have to do more water advisors. And what happens is, we can replace that block of pipe. And now, it won't fail for another 20 years, but the next weakest link in the system, it's right upstream or downstream, it will fail. So, what will happen is, you'll make an initial investment of X and Y and Z, which you'll be frustrated because you're not seeing the results, because the brakes won't be here, but they'll pop over here. And eventually, there'll be a tipping point of where you will move from and start seeing the numbers. We're bending the main break curves, which will set up and have monthly and annual reporting, and then we'll also begin to see your revenue water increase as a total percentage and your non-revenue water decline. But it's a journey. I wish I could come in and say, if you spend X dollars in six months, the problem will go away, and just get the entire industry. If we had that magic bullet, I'd have fortune across the country. It just doesn't work that way. So, I do appreciate the recognition of where you are and the staff is committed to be able to turn this around. But again, I can't stress, this is a journey, which will require investment in time and talent and funding in order to be able to turn those curves.
Well, I know we're already started. I know I've gone over lines with our city engineer that kind of play into what he just said, is we take some strain, if we just take some strain from some of our pump stations, from our water tanks, all the sun lines, will give us much better life out of them. You know, we, it's basically downtown, you know, where everything starts, and the next one. So, we are identifying areas that we can attack very readily, but I understand fully, if we fix this one over here, it's certainly going to put a strain on the next block or way back to where I don't know.
Another key point driver I'll comment on is, when I entered the industry in 1980, essentially, the whole focus was, we had drinking water compliance at a plant, and you didn't worry about the distribution system, order just ran out. It's what we change today. So, today, we have regulations that require us to maintain chlorine residual, but also maintain what are called disinfectant byproducts below certain threshold levels, which is called the EVP rule. They actually compete with one another. If you completely solve one, and jack up the chlorine levels to be able to comply with one, you actually get out of sync with the other. But what's the solution? The state best practice is you flush your lines. But when you flush your lines, that water is typically not metered. So, therefore, that could be a fairly large contributor. Why are you doing that? Because you have to maintain the levels of chlorine residual and keep your disinfectant byproducts. So, unfortunately, what we have with today's drinking water regulations, sometimes we are competing in to solve one problem, like Flint, Michigan did with lead, but then we create another, more disastrous problem. So, we have to be careful as we're navigating through this, we don't create unintended results in the whole due process. But it is a challenge today on the drinking water side, as well as the wastewater side, with meeting the current regulatory requirement.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, I just want to say thank you for backing up that timeline to fit within the budget process. That was a big deal for me when we got the original proposal. That way, we didn't have to wait another year before we started making some improvements.
That absolutely makes sense.
Do you think we're going to give you enough time to adequately evaluate the system? Knowing the mileage, knowing the scale of the problem?
I think what will happen here is, I'll be able to go to good field, and with Ryan's institutional knowledge, we're going to be able to come back and say, there's a way to jumpstart this program to where he pretty much knows, here's some lines that have to be replaced, and we win no matter what. So, I'm not as concerned about year one or year two investment. Then, in parallel, we start collecting additional data, the more challenging decisions you will become in year three, four, five, and six. So, the obvious, we can all sit in a room, here's a water main that needs to be addressed. It's a major street, many repairs, traffic disruption, service disruption, et cetera. So, I think I'm confident that we can get this started. And then, what you're going to find is, there's going to be some areas that I'll come back and recommend. You need to take a deeper dive with another expert or within your own staff. I'm a big fan of building as much of this capability and competence with your own resources, who believe it, live it every day, or proud of seeing the results change, as opposed to just going out and contracting. But in some cases, we may need to go out and recommend to you that you bring in some expertise, because you don't have the knowledge or the time in order to be able to do some of the work. So, I feel confident we can get you started, and there may be a piece that say, here's kind of part A, get started, and then there may be another part B to come back and cycle that says, consider that for future years as you go through the cycle.
I think a tally of what citizens come to me, just me alone, about, and it's water every time. So, I think the citizens understand we've got an issue, and they, I think they appreciate that we're all here trying to make a difference. You know, they want to see action. They don't want to see outages, but they do want to see action, and that's what happened. But I think it's, this is an important first step for us.
As an elected official, we, we have to build a business case, essentially, that can justify investment, because at the end of the day, it's building efforts that's what you build. So, essentially, we have to be accountable to the customers. So, we have to show these results. I'm so happy that you've brought in public information resources to be able to tell that story. If we tell that story correctly, we will get support.
Well, I had a guy yesterday, he said, sign me up if you, if you need somebody to help pay to get lines replaced. And I thought from a taxpayer, that's unheard of, but if people are willing to sacrifice to make this work for their town.
You're absolutely right, but we have to be able to tell the story, and then Ryan and his team have to deliver. So, that's part of it, because if we make this investment and we don't deliver, then we'll be back in here, and we have to be accountable. But I am confident that if we get the program, I tell folks, you're lovable, it's a different scale, but we justified it, 150 million, 15-year program, 10 million a year. As a chief engineer, I'll end on this, it was time, the program was finished, we replaced 600 miles of pipe, and it was time to ramp the program down, and our board, our governing body says, I don't want to do it. Everybody likes it so much. So, we built an expectation that replacing aging infrastructure isn't ongoing every year, and therefore, you stay ahead of the curve. We're behind the curve, we got to get ahead of it.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. I think we better move our middle school visitors into the reports and all, instead of waiting for, I'm just waiting for anything. I know they want to get back to their afternoon classes as quick as possible. Now, if I was still out there teaching, I'd just soon be down here a while before you came back, but I don't have the people to be in. So, who, you got a spokesperson?
My name's David Sparks, and I just recently started teaching at Ashland Middle School, and Mr. Mark Herman asked me to come today to represent our team back there. We have the Cryptid Catfish, they're going to be representing us at State, and they're here to do a presentation for everybody.
Who?
First cat we need to have is down to you all.
Sure can. Whoever's going to be speaking, just make sure you pull the mic down a little bit so it's closer to you, and be loud and clear, represent Ashland Middle School, high level.
Mayor, I didn't mean to surprise you all, but I did invite this group here. I had the luxury of hearing them. Yeah, so they, I thought it was such a compelling presentation, and I want, I thought you all would appreciate it.
Did you think about just inviting by your home for dinner? And having? Okay, and you are?
Gracie.
I can't hear you.
Gracie.
Gracie who?
Mary.
You got to speak to the other mic, so everybody back there can hear you also.
Our community is very close to the Ohio River, and many people vote, patients, Ben Saeck, and that is it. The river runs through West Virginia, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, Pennsylvania, and Illinois. But sadly, according to the EPA, the Ohio River is one of the most polluted in the U.S. You know, our city hasn't have been where we go one seater in a claim to the river banks, but we don't think that this is enough. Another organization in our area is Build Ashland, and that is an organization that helps beautify our community, and we hope to team up with them and help.
Our meeting with Mr. Perkins, a city council member, went extremely well. Mr. Perkins offered us the help we needed and listened to our presentation politely. And he invited us to a city council meeting to present for the city council and the mayor. He said he's very happy to be working with kids who are willing to improve our community, and we are grateful to have backup from our school and our community and possibly Build Ashland.
Mr. Perkins not only listened to us, but he gave advice and asked us questions. He told us that our community is currently working on a project on 29th Street to put in new pipes so that the sewage water or sewage will be cleaned before being pumped into the river. We are so happy to see that our community is taking such a big, like, taking such a big step. This project has been going on for a long time, and is pretty costly, but as Mr. Perkins says, it's a risk we are willing to take. We are so delighted to be accompanied by you all guys, and we hope that our next meeting will go just as great or even better.
In our world today, pollution is a large problem. Many people all over the world don't even have access...
Who are you?
Oh, sorry. That's the Aliff.
Okay.
In our world today, pollution is a large problem. Many people all over the world don't even have access to clean water. Our team would like to fix this problem, because a world without water is like fish out of water. It just doesn't work. Human bodies use around 60% water. That's all what it comes down to. So your body needs water, and it surely shouldn't be polluted water. To help stop the pollution, we can do a number of things, such as cleaning riverbanks, beaches, and recycling water. Although there's so much out there we can do, our team would like to do more. We would like to start an organization in our community called Water Wonders. This organization could have branches all over the community that work to clean the banks of the river, protest things that pollue our water, and raise funding for projects already happening or projects that we would like to start in the future. Although we are just a group of kids, we truly believe we can make an impact.
I'm confident. And Mr. Perkins, when you talked with him, did he mention he had other people he worked with down here?
That's why I encourage him to come here.
Or did you hear a whole lot of "I, I, I"? I just want to get that public. Okay, and you are?
My name is Aubrey Hay, and I'd like to share with you why we would like to start this organization. We know that there are other organizations in our world working towards the same goal of helping clean our bodies of water, but there isn't an efficient one that cleans on a regular basis in Ashland. In fact, pollution in bodies of water have increased 11% since 2010. Not only this, but you can see many things the pollution is affecting, such as extremely large catfish and other fish in our bodies of water. The results can often be a bit scary. Our team feels that this is a bad problem, not only affecting the health of fish, but of humans. According to the EPA, being exposed to polluted water can cause respiratory and neurological problems. We created this organization because we would like to help our communities to have less polluted water. We will be spreading awareness to not put waste in the river, raise money to help reach our goals, clean the river, and promote recycling and using. If our organization goes statewide, we will be doing the same thing, just on a larger scale. But we cannot reach this goal without the support of our local government and communities.
I'm Caroline Pullen, and our team has created a website. The link or URL is on the last page of your packets. It contains all the information that we've shared with you today and some more, but of course, this isn't the only website on this topic. There are many more that are also listed on the last page.
A bit more about our organization is, our organization will be about twice a month to clean the banks of rivers and go over some things happening currently, and kind of go over problems and ways we can stop them. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How do you think you're going to set up some, you know, support groups around the community?
One way we thought was, we of course need more than just our little group of people to help us, so we would start in our school by maybe having signups for people to join the organization and help us, because a lot of people know about this problem, and I'm sure that they would be willing to help. And also, we need, like, I don't really know, like, permission to kind of do this, to make sure it's okay with people.
And also, we have social media, so our little interwebs can help us connect with other people.
Well, we know that. Here's my personal social media representative, keeping me informed on everything. When I was the coach of the Tomcats, I used to take my team around to the grade schools, and we'd show them, we'd not only show them basketball things, but we'd talk about character and citizenship and all that. And it's very impressive to do that. Where our elementary schools kind of represent some geographical spots around Ashland. And I would recommend to Mr. Green, who I used to control daily, I'm superintendent, but I think it'd be great to take this group, you might not have the attention span that we're providing, but go around to some classes at elementary schools, get the same message. They will listen to you all probably far better than they would listen to your teacher or even if we went in. But kids listen to other kids when they're as polished as all of you are, and getting your message out. But I'm sure you could work it out with Mr. Green and all those elementary principals, and high school for that matter, and go around, because then you all, all of a sudden, you have 200 or 300 kids carrying that message in their neighborhoods. They're thinking that way, too, and if you just get half of those or a fourth of them, then you've got another little group of kids thinking the same way you are. We can help you a lot of ways when we are determining certain things to be done, the riverfront, Central Park, wherever we have water, I mean, you know, to take care of the pond and take care of the fountains there and all that. But please, let's open up the communication lines with the city, and you can do that with any of us, and also with our new skating public service officer back there. I'm glad to know that she used to be on TV in San Francisco with the Whalers or whoever. My God. Or I might say something crosswasted. But we would like to get you on our website, on the city website, as a little subgroup of city government. How about that? And that way, it goes to everybody in the community. But I would work, I'm just thinking as a school teacher, I would work on those elementary schools, because that's where everything starts. Just like with you all coming here, protection of water in Ashland, if you all think that, then we're in good hands. If we get some elementary kids thinking that way, we're going to be in good hands for a long time. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate you guys, and I want to encourage you. I like your energy. And Build Ashland is a group that got started, and you can link together with Build Ashland.
As a representative?
Yeah, as a representative of Build Ashland. I hear Wes Thompson is one of the founding fathers and one of the most committed citizens that we have in Ashland, Kentucky. And I can tell you, he would like to team up with you all through Build Ashland. Thank you, sweetie. Steve. I think you appreciate what you're doing and the efforts. We'll help you every way we can, okay? So you consider yourself kind of a wing of city government? How's that? Not everybody would think that's great. I have to think it is.
Mr. Mayor, could I address them real quick before they leave?
Absolutely.
My name's Wes Thompson, and I'm one of the board members with Build Ashland. And first of all, I'd like to say that to know that middle schoolers, even know what Build Ashland is and have any desire to connect with it, is one of the highest honors Build Ashland's had this year. I think that's amazing. Number two, I think I can speak for Dave Daniel and the rest of the board members of Build Ashland, that we would love to be a part of the Water Wonder Project, and anything we can do to help you, we'd be so excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Staff, thank you guys for being here, bringing up, we appreciate it. Come back anytime, and we'll try to stay in tune with you on your website, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you for coming. You can read on the agenda, if you have something to bring before the commission, five minutes or less, and give us your name and address. Hopefully, we're trying to get a system in place in the future that we have something you can fill out. Sometimes people don't want to get up, but we want to hear from you, and you can fill it out and give it to the clerk before you leave, or any of us or something, so we know what kind of, if it's a complaint, if it's a recommendation, opinion, whatever the case may be. Wes, you have all of those.
All right.
In your repertoire.
My name's Wes Thompson, I'm on 2738 Terrace Boulevard, Ashland, Kentucky. What I wanted to do today was just kind of give you a State of the Union on what's going on with the Shop 29th project, where we're at with the resources that were granted to us to take care of. I served as president for the Ashland in Motion Board, that was a nonprofit, the money was granted to. In January, we will have a full breakdown, dollar for dollar, where everything went, but today, I want you to know just the status of the campaign, because we're still in the middle of it, and not everything's developed yet. So first of all, we thought about how we would separate the resources, and when you talk about the number of businesses, and some affected more than others, we found it better, and the most fair option was to create a campaign for the entire 29th Street business community. And what that allowed us to do was have a little more spending power to be able to create one campaign for better reach and frequency than if we tried to some way divide this money out amongst the businesses. It just wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been near as robust or effective. So what we came up with was a project called Shop 29th. First thing we did was we built a Facebook page, basically as a landing point for information. We have got campaigns running, 30 Second Spot Television right now with WSAZ. We have 30 Second Spot Radio with iHeart Media, WKEE. We also have utilized the Daily Independent, we intend to use them more, and of course, we've done boost marketing with Facebook. So far, WSAZ and the folks at iHeart have been very generous in the way these buys have been handled. And right now, we're running 30 second, but we also have five second spots and 10 second spots and 15 second spots on radio, as well as five second and 15 second spots that are about to start tomorrow on WSAZ. We also, I myself donated production to the tune of a little more than $2,000. The radio stations donated all production. I used an ad agency known as Wolf Advertising that I functioned as creative director for to handle the media buy. They took no agency fee nor agency commission on anything. We wanted every dollar of it to go towards reach and frequency. And so, we're proud of that. What we created was a campaign based around trying to drive people, not only just top of mind awareness, to remember that those roads are back open and those businesses need traffic, but we tried to incentivize it. So we have a contest where you can, if you shop at any 29th Street business, from Blackburn to Carter, you can take your receipt of $5 or more to Ken's 29th Street Express Mart, one of the most effective businesses, right there at Ground Zero, basically. And you, on Saturday, the 23rd, we will do a drawing for $1,000 cash. $1,000 cash was derived by $500 from Ashland in Motion, and then I contacted my buddy Dave Daniel with the board at Build Ashland, and they put in another $500 to make the cash prize $1,000. So, you know, just some quick stuff, like I said, right now, we're on DSA placement with SAZ, DSA placement, morning drive placement with WKEE. On Facebook, we had a 60-second video that we did some boost marketing with. It's already reached over 26,000 people with 20,000-plus views, and that's just counting the one video. We still have more marketing to do there. This is just where we're at right now. At the end of the day, you know, I'm very results-driven. I hope that we hear some sort of feedback. I hope that these stores do feel a boost here in the holiday season. But I, looking at, you know, just the different things, oh, also, My Town TV completely unsolicited, took it upon themselves to promote the Shop 29th project, which we really appreciate from them. And, you know, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, too, was, you know, how all this has come together. It's just, it's been great to watch everybody, the minute we got in contact with these media outlets, like, how can we help? You know, when you hear that, you're like, okay, well, let's see how it goes. So I hope that we see, I hope that these businesses do feel a bump this holiday season. And like I said, in January, we'll come back and give you a more, a more robust, more kind of drawn-out detail of where every dime has gone, but my estimate, by the time we put in production and things that would have gone in, and just the in-kind donations that these media outlets are giving us, I would be willing to bet the $5,000 initial investment will end up feeling more like a $9,000 or $10,000 stamp. So I'd say we're getting double our money for what was put in, and that I'm pretty proud of.
We are, too. So we're very proud of you and your efforts. It's a situation in which we didn't have, you know, federal mandate to put these CSO lines in and all that, and we knew it would be a problem, we didn't realize, you know, the magnitude.
Sure.
And we had other avenues we wanted to do, but we were not legally able to help in certain ways we all thought about. But this was a great way to try, and at least they know, I mean, we've all been in and out of these places, telling them, you know, we're trying everything we can, we're sorry about all this, and that, and we're, I think this is a great effort that's going on, and let's keep our friends across, it helps a lot.
Yeah, and while I'm standing up here, that drawing will be on Saturday, the 23rd, during the Christmas crawl, that is also an Ashland in Motion-sponsored event, just to promote shopping on Saturday, 23rd, in downtown Ashland, but it's, I just want to throw it out there, it's from noon to four. We'll be doing the giveaways for both the raffle for the Christmas crawl, as well as the Shop 29th prize at Blazers at 3:30 that day. But that day, you'll have stuff like, they have a Santa's going to be down there, we're going to have choir coming in to sing from Longwood Baptist. We'll have, you'll have free gift wrapping for any shopping that you do downtown, there'll be free gift wrapping, so, and holiday decorations, this is going to be like a Christmas sort of casual extravaganza, if you will. So we're going to have a good time on Saturday, and look forward to giving away these prizes. And again, you know, I appreciate the city and the generous grant, and again, the people that came together to kind of make this worthwhile project.
You are the city, Wes.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thanks, man. Back to you. Anyone else?
My name's Alan Johnson, I live at 616 Hoover Street here in Ashland.
616 Hoover?
As in the vacuum. I recently contacted code enforcement about beekeeping in the city, and I found out there's an ordinance against bees in the city. I'd like the city to consider changing this. Bees are a major part of our food, and beekeepers over the last 10 years is losing bees very badly. They don't know why. But if we can put bees in every back, bees in the backyards of citizens in the city of Ashland, it will help out a lot.
So I haven't looked at that ordinance closely, I think I did, I think I talked with you.
You spoke with Mike Crawford.
Okay. I did talk to Mike Crawford the other night, a police combination, but I did pull that ordinance out the left. And, you know, a lot of communities, I know Lexington, my brother's a beekeeper in Lexington, and he doesn't live where he did, but he still has his brownstone two blocks from Rupp Arena, and he had probably a dozen. I'd, you know, but I never knew there should be a problem with it. And, you know, sometimes when you have an ordinance, I think, I don't know, Mr. Paul and I were talking this morning, or I don't know who, about laws are made due to some incident, you know? Whether it's in the city of Ashland, or it's in Washington DC or Franklin, wherever. And sometimes are antiquated, sometimes, you know, I go back when I was a kid, when they filled Central Park Pond in back in about 57, 58, because some people lived on Lexington Avenue, they were very wealthy people, talked about mosquito problem. So the answer was fill it in. I remember coming home from school every day in the room, watching them fill that in. Well, I got on the park board, we dug it out. It's 95. I mean, you know, and they've heard a thing since, other than God's beautiful. I mean, you know, and they'd heard a thing since, other than God's beautiful, we glad, we glad we have it. So, I for one, we've had requests for chickens in the, you know, I know you get into that one, okay? It's like, I'm not getting, I'm not going there. But I for one would have no problem now, where you would, you may have a problem in the neighborhood, and some people be afraid their small kids would get, for whatever reason, get to the swarm or something, I don't know. How do you respond to that, though, if you're looking to change the ordinance?
And studying to get bees, I don't have any yet, I have worked around some. But there is preventative, beekeepers can do to keep bees from swarming, not saying they can stop swarming. But a beekeeper can go in, see what's going on with the hive, and see they're going to possibly swarm, and they can make a split. And therefore, they move the queen and part of the hive to just a few feet away, and then the bees that's left without a queen, they will start to produce and raise a new queen. And therefore, that can prevent swarms.
Now, I've actually read up on a lot, my brother got me interested a long time ago, because he brought us honey all the time, made me interested. My wife went to a beekeeping workshop, I think Kat is for UK Extension, do the things, and all day workshop and all, and she was really fascinated by it. My brother used to tell me that bee, I didn't, I don't, hey, he went all over the country to bee stuff, but he said his, his bees a lot of times would leave the hive, and they would go as far as 200 miles away.
That I don't know.
Yeah, I thought it was amazing, and I, I mean, I, I don't know if they do or not, I, I, I don't know how you could track them, but he said, he learned this when he went to bee training and all that. But it's, I, I wouldn't have a problem at all, the problem would be if, if in fact it was a public safety issue. You know, some, you know, what could you do if, if they did swarm, a small kid playing in her backyard? I've never heard of that happening, okay, so I'm just, but in my position, I may really think something would be great to do, and why not? I think you'll have a pond in the backyard.
I think it's just a matter of gathering information, finding out what the safety issue is.
Yeah, we'll look into that, because I, on the surface, I'd be all for it, I don't have a problem with that. But we'll do some research, and if you can do some research, get it to us. I for about anything, if it's not a public safety hazard.
As a person who carries an EpiPen for severe bee allergy?
You do?
Yeah, yeah. I would like to know, safety.
So, we'll, we'll try to research it together, see what we come up with, run it up, farm, no, but it's kind of a, it's, again, it's a safety issue, but we haven't looked yet.
I do know that some communities go on the basis of size of lots, and such, you know, but.
Well, it's a certain size yard, and you can have a hive or two.
There's best practices, I'm sure we can look at.
I think, I think we should study, I'm, I'm, I'm for it. There's a local bee club, it's NortheasternKentuckyBeekeepers.com, which I think is just any beekeeper.
Well, I think there's been so much, so much research on the decline of the honeybee, and how it's important. And I know my children take little honey every day, it's now just sort of ended up.
Maybe, maybe the representatives could come to the commission media and tell us more.
Right.
I think we're all open, we just, we have to be cautious.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kara Sperry. I don't really live in the city of Ashland, but I live at 2806 West Rock House Road in Ashland, Kentucky.
What's your last name?
Sperry.
Sperry, okay.
Yes, and I came to speak with you a couple of weeks ago about highway markers for Gertrude Ramey. And with me, I have a proposal of what I would like to see done in the county and the city for her. And I've got those for you, if I could get those to you. I would like to thank you all today for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. My hopes is recognizing and honoring a wonderful lady that made a huge impact on the city of Ashland, the county of Boyd, and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. That's Gertrude Ramey. I would like to get three highway markers in honor of her. On the second page under the introduction, you will see that the markers cost $2,500, or $2,500 each, if they have the same text on both sides, and $3,000 each if they have different texts on both sides. So, that's what I'm looking for today, just to bring you all this information that I want to do this, and hopefully get some help and funding for these. My location that I would like to have those placed is, one, where she had her homes. She had one home across the street from the courthouse in, in Calixburg. She had one on Winchester Avenue near 25th Street, I think you know more about that one. And she also had the final one at Ball McCullough Drive in Boyd County, where the new Boyd County Animal Shelter is going. Just some remarks about Gertrude Ramey. Gertrude was a care provider for over 3,000 children. And I don't, can't think of anybody who's raised 3,000 children. But she did that between 1944 and 1988. She took her first child in 1994. She moved to the larger home in 1950 on Winchester Avenue, because she had outgrown the home in Calixburg. Then in 58 to 1960 is when she moved out to what was originally the Boyd County Courthouse. And she took it over, and that was the location on Ball McCullough Drive, and she was there until 1988. Ms. Ramey passed away in 1999, I mean, sorry, 1991. And in order to get a highway marker for some individual, they have to be going from here for at least 25 years. And we're on that mark, actually, it was a couple of years ago. And so, I've had these applications and looked at this for several years. I've even done a smaller, honorable thing for her. I sent in and got her recognized as a Kentucky Women Remembered, and her watercolor picture of her and her, with two children, and her home is hanging in the, in the Capitol, in the, one of the hallways. So, she did remarkable work, and I just think that she needs to be honored for all the things that she done for our county and our city.
Thank you. No, I'm not here, I knew her, I knew who she was, I played with all the kids, I lived a couple of blocks away. My mother just threatened to send me there, anyway. Yeah, Marty, you got that one, did you?
I, I got that too.
The rain hole. Okay, we got basketball court out back. Eat good food, I've seen it, you know, that's what gave me. Counselor, you've been involved in these markers, is that about right? Is that what they do, that $2,500 for one?
It varies depending on what you want to put on it.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where.
Oh, in the, in the proposal, I gave you an actual copy of the application that comes from the state for those markers. And you have to go through the Kentucky Historical Society to get those.
Sure.
And then I was.
They researched it.
Right. And it's a lengthy application, it'll take a while to get, get done, you have to have provides, you know, picture proof and different things. I have kind of started this on my own, to do this for her. I would gladly have to take one help, if anybody wants to do that as well. I've also talked with the county to try to get funding for the other additional ones that are out in the county, and maybe even talked to the City of Calixburg Commission to do that as well.
Well, as I mentioned, you know, the, I didn't know about the one in Calixburg as of before, my time, but I did know the one on Winchester, and I'm just not sure if it's, it would've been right between that Red's Restaurant now, used to be a pizza place, and the, and the Moose Club. He walked up these big steps into it. So, I don't know who owns that property now, or, or, you know, how you'd go about putting maybe a smaller sign there. Maybe the large sign on 60, close to where her last rainy home was, I would think. But I don't know how that would work.
The state would have to approve that. We wouldn't have the ability to do that, but I think what she's requesting is, she's wanting some assistance from the city for the fee.
Yeah, oh, I picked up on that. I picked up on that when we met, one time.
We have no way to approve that.
Yeah.
It would have to be, and then they would secure a portion of the locations, either in all of the location processes.
I would think if, if it gets approvals and all, that the three entities could probably work together and come up and maybe, we'd probably get some donations to, to help, you know, pay for it, or whatever it is. And, I mean, I don't, if you're thinking three, I, I don't know if the state would approve three of those large, large ones like you do. I would doubt that, but whatever, I mean, we, we could, you can apply and all that. But I, I would think the City of Calixburg, and Ashland, and Boyd County, to work together on a, sign out on 60, where her last home was, where it'd be very visible. I mean, that's just me now, I'll tell you, I'm not making rules or anything. But we'll, we'll be glad to assist in some way, and if we proceed with, with the application process, and if you need our help on the application process, I'm sure we can.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, so you have to get funding secured before you can apply?
I think so, yeah. I think, I don't have, I didn't bring the application with me, but I, I think so. And that's, you know, so, and they, no, you know.
Once the mark, once the marker subject is approved, the applicant must pay for the application mark. So, you get approved, and then, hey, we could get these $9,000. Okay, we'll go about it that way, thanks, okay. I will start working on that.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, we appreciate you being here, and we'll try and make this painless possible the rest of the way. Okay, old business, out of May.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland, meaning section six, ordinance number 51, series of 2017, which adopted the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan of the City of Ashland. So, move.
Second, any discussion? All favor? Aye, opposed, like, sign, aye, deet.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland, meaning part three, conditions of employment, section B, probation period, section S, employee evaluation, appendix B, employee evaluation program. Part six, benefits, D, Sicily, Q, credit unions, S, YMCA. Appendix B, secondary employment, appendix F, drug and alcohol testing policy. Appendix G, suggestion program. Appendix L, travel and training regulations. And appendix N, a credit card policy of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye, opposed, like, sign. Set agenda? Oh, you, we made it, didn't we?
We did.
Okay. Item C.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland, adopting the job description for the position of administrative assistant as a replacement for Secretary III in the Department of General Government, Division of Human Resources. Adopting the job description for the position of GIS analyst as a replacement for GIS technician in the Division of Engineering. Adopting the revised job description for the positions of water meter mechanic, water distribution field supervisor, and inventory control clerk, all of Division of Water Distribution and Meter Services. Adopting the revised job description for pre-treatment administrator in the Division of Wastewater Treatment Plan, all of Department of Engineering Utilities. Adopting the revised job description for the position of mass transit secretary in the Division of Mass Transit. Adopting the revised job description for traffic technician two in the Division of Streets, both in the Department of Public Works. Adopting the revised job description for the Director of Community and Economic Development, and amending the authorized positions to reflect the change entitled Secretary III in the Department of General Government, the reclassification of GIS tech, technician, water meter mechanic, and pre-treatment administrator in the Department of Engineering Utilities, and the reclassification of mass transit secretary in the Department of Public Works of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended. So, move.
Second, any discussion? All favor? Aye, opposed, like, sign, aye, deet.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland, authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and the Leesa Community Bank, accepting the donation of property at 1401 Winchester Avenue.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye, opposed, like, sign. Set agenda.
The resolution of the City of Ashland, adopting and authorizing and approving the course of action recommended by the City Manager, Al Adams, to bring on the consent agenda for the regular meeting on Thursday, December 14, 2017.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do have some questions in regards to the consent agenda. First off, I would like to check, we had made a resolution, or the body made a resolution, Commissioner Clark actually recommended it, that we actually receive information through the consent agenda and the new agenda, anything considered before the body about 48 hours prior to a meeting. And currently, I'd like to amend that resolution to add that maybe we'll receive a draft agenda by 5:30 Friday for regular meetings, with the last opportunity to receive information on the agenda 48 hours prior to the meeting.
I agree with that. I think so, my opinion is clear.
Technically, we can handle that in new business, we have a motion on the floor right now.
Sure, sure.
Consent agenda, but following the consent agenda resolution, we would need to, we can do that at the beginning of new business.
You have another item?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna go down the list.
You have mine?
Uh, yes. I did, but I was gonna actually start with six, seven, eight, nine, 10 left.
Okay.
Okay. Number six, it says that the City Manager recommends payment to a developer for tip. Is the developer, the developer that's mentioned in, where is the developer's name mentioned?
It's in the attachment, Commissioner. So, for item number six.
Seven, eight, nine.
These are all different, these are all different contractors.
Subs, subs under the, on the. Okay, so, so for the, and I apologize for my ignorance on this, because it is a tip issue, and it's complicated, but.
Okay.
So, we, every time we recommend a payment for what we've already borrowed, or however you want to call it, so, we're gonna pay that, pay these vendors based on the invoice that's given to the city every time?
Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then each, so the vendor's always gonna be different, based on, obviously, who's doing the sub work?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I, it just, the only thing I was worried about with, with not having the developer's name, is if it's the same developer, different developer.
Well, it's actually, I mean, to me, as I reviewed this, this is the cleanest way to do it, probably legally, so you know exactly who's doing it.
That's fine, I mean, that, my only concern was with it not having the name of the developer, you know, if that's it. Oh, I, I know, but I didn't, but I mean, it's not on the agenda for the public to see.
But we'll have the formal agreement with him if this is this time.
Right, and I saw that, so I, that's basically what I'm asking is, so the agreement with the, the vendor is, is blanketed for the rest of, of all these requests? Okay, all right, that's, that's all.
It is actually on the agenda, Commissioner.
Right, it is the name of the, the, the vendor that we're, right.
The reason I like it that way is, again, Mr. Paul, I'd like you to carry to the developers our, our desire to have as many local.
Absolutely.
People involved, and whatever's done in that hotel. I don't care who the contractor is, if we're not bringing people from Georgia, or like, Virginia, or somewhere.
We are right here at home.
We have plenty of people to do everything down there, and that's, please, I'll let them know, I have, but please carry the message. You know, this kind of, this is another big item, or these aren't any major actual stuff. I understand that, this is housekeeping stuff. But the actual labor and everything they can purchase in Ashland or Boyd County, I hope will be done in that manner.
That, that's their plan, and as you can see, this is mostly contract services that were required by Marriott brand, using, in some cases, inclusive.
I knew Marriott had some stipulations, so that makes sure it looks exactly like their. I knew Marriott had some stipulations, so that makes sure it looks exactly like their brand and all.
But, for instance, the company that's suing the demolition right now, they are an outside company, but they're hiring or have hired several local workers.
Well, at some point, I'd like to see a number. Seriously, I'd like to see a number, how many local people are working with these contractors?
Once they finish MO, the construction will pick up, and I think that we'll be able to find them.
So are we going to see a lot of those requests coming in as well as that construction starts for repayment? Will we see a lot of that on the consent agendas in the future?
I think.
There's quite a few of them out today.
Yeah, well, these, these big packs of the closing of the, Mr. Gray, you had all the.
Sure, sure, sure.
Step in too much, but, yeah, it'll be, wherever we see an invoice, that invoice has to be approved by our finance department. They did make a recommendation after council, upon council, the city commission to.
So, and forgive me for my ignorance, but so, when we pass this tip, we just don't hand them a check for millions of dollars? We actually are vetting it every time something comes in?
That's true.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, I would be, but along since we're on this, you know, we gave final approval today to acceptance of the fourteenth street property, Mr. Coleman. So when will, when will we, what's our next step there? I mean, what's our plan to go towards demolition, et cetera?
Yeah, well, as soon as we get permission to sign the deed, we'll, we have the good documents ready, so we'll probably release those next week.
Okay, well, we may need a special meeting, fifteen minute meeting, to make sure the commissioners are really brought up on what the bid package is going to say for the demolition, what that's going to look like.
Well, we need to review what we have, do you all read?
Okay, okay, all right, thanks, appreciate it. Yeah, out of thirteen, I just, I'm assuming the answer, what the answer is, but that the truck for engineering utilities from Bob Hook Chevrolet.
The background on this, Mayor, is that this is a vehicle that was asked for in the last budget. We're still trying to get through another year with it, the transmission's gone out. We've got a fifteen year history on this vehicle, I believe it's a two thousand two vehicle with some significant challenges, and the transmission really puts it past the cost benefit of replacing the transmission. This is, this is going to have to be replaced, and we wanted to stretch another year.
Did we bid locally?
Yeah, that's all I want to know, I'm not questioning whether we needed it or not, is, did anybody locally bid on it?
No, we own liveries, need to do one bid.
Did we hand deliver the opportunity to bid, and the police department did that?
I don't believe we did, I know that local vendors had it.
Local vendors did have it, though, our local vendors had the opportunity to bid on it, okay.
That's all I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't make it so clear, but, so Bob, too late, I just, yeah, I wouldn't. Anybody else have a question on the consent agenda?
Motion to act agenda to close a business Friday for regular scheduled meetings with the body to not consider any items before the work within forty-eight hours before a meeting.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Is that, any questions on the?
I have a motion, I think.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have a question, is, logistically, can we handle that? Can we handle that?
To be very blunt, there's a large push that goes on every Tuesday, the topics are supposed to be in by Friday. The reality of how things come in is that we do get a lot of things last minute. We spend an enormous amount of time on Mondays and Tuesdays, preparing for Tuesday night. This will take a weekly focus, I guess, ready for the board of commissioners into.
Preparing for Thursday night, you mean?
Preparing for Thursday, same idea. This will now stretch out to two weeks, so this will be an ongoing effort to get this ready. I'm very sensitive to the fact, Commissioner, you all haven't enough time to read it, I do get that.
You know, you and I've had the conversation, I've always felt like this process was backwards in terms of how the agenda is crafted. And I've, I've always thought it was a backwards thing that the agenda is driven by staff instead of the commission. It feels like, I've always thought that the staff meeting should be after the commission meeting to talk about what the commission is driving, does that?
The general city staff meeting?
Yes.
So the staff meetings aren't totally focused on just the commission agenda.
Right.
So we have weekly staff meetings, and those staff meetings will hit the topics up, still need for resolve. So next Tuesday, we'll have a staff meeting that'll cover anything that's unresolved here, make sure responsibilities are assigned, and do normal day-to-day business work. The following week, the focus on that staff meeting will be in preparation for this. So any questions that I have as a city manager, when I get these on Friday, I get initial draft on Friday. When I do, it's not ready for prime time, it's nowhere near ready for prime time. And so, even though we have that internal deadline of Friday, there are inevitably things that pop up. Some of it can be through federal staff work, some of it is just things happen. So, we can, we can send out the draft, and we'll adjust as necessary, but the reality of this is it will take staff focus now every week, as opposed to that hard push those couple days before. And it is pushed to get out to you Tuesday night.
Well, you know, I feel like if it's, if it's non-emergent, then it goes to the next agenda. So whatever you can get on the table by that Friday is probably a fair time, amount of time to get it to them. And then, like I said, if they can't meet it during that timeframe, we just push it.
I'm just saying the reality of that is there will be emergencies.
Oh, sure, and I don't think anybody, that's why we give you the forty-eight hours, because I think if we can have.
Yeah, well, again, we've talked before about how it's very difficult to make a decision on something that we get Thursday morning or Wednesday night. It's hard to get our questions answered and get the background line.
Does the staff not pay a response on those?
Well, it's not so much the staff, it's I, just to give you an example, I have a regular job, and it's nine to five, sometimes it's ten to six, ten to eight, and so I may not even look at the agenda until I get home in the evening, and by that time, there's no city staff available to answer your questions. So now, because of that, I carry over, and if I'm sick or have a crisis at home, or whatever, as you can imagine, similar to things you have in your own home, it's just not enough time, I think, for me to feel like I'm doing the best I can do to review the agenda what's presented before us, so that I can give the citizens my all when I, when I approve an ordinance or disapprove of it.
I just don't understand why staff can't get things, I've served here many years, and we would get a, we would get a book delivered to our home that, that would have all the background backup. You've seen them, I'm sure, candy.
Just getting down there all in here.
Yeah, well, and, but if you get them a night or two before, I agree with Mr. Perkins, but I don't understand how it all hinges on putting all kinds of work on staff. I don't get it, folks, you know, I like all of you, but it don't make sense to me.
We will absolutely implement what the commissioner's looking for, I am trying to, trying to explain it, it does. The agendas that you all get have been thought through, a lot of questions go into that. So that it is, we try to adjust the topic lines for you, so that you see the cost and the resources that are required. We'll make the adjustment if that's what the board is.
If there, I agree with Commissioner Perkins, if there's an emergency deal, or something that really has to be on there, none of us have a problem with that. But the general layout of the agenda, we should have it in ample time, that we can study it closely. I'm like, you know, I get it, I've got other things going on too, and I'm here every day. So I just think we're going to give it a try, and I think it'll work, it'll work fine. We vote on it yet? All favor? Aye. Close? Good support there, we run the city, you administrate it, we run it, so, let's do it. Out of B, on the new business.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the City of Ashland and WB Hospitality LLC, setting forth respective rights, covenants, and obligations in respect to the acquisition control and financing of the hotel redevelopment project. So move.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye, close and like sign, out of C.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland amending a handicap parking space on the west side of Sixteenth Street, two hundred block, and providing a penalty for the violation of this ordinance. So move.
Second.
Is this adding one? I thought we always had one there on that side, on the two hundred.
This actually adds, it's a recommendation of the traffic task force in response to the new business that has frequent handicap customers.
So it does add?
Yeah, it does add.
Okay. Any discussion? All favor? Aye, close and like sign, out of D.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland amending section one of ordinance number forty-one, series of nineteen ninety-three, which prohibited parking on portions of Eighth Street, to prohibit parking on the west side of Eighth Street from Central Avenue to Bath Avenue in the City of Ashland. Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Close and like sign. Out of E.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and New Tech Systems, Inc., for the installation and implementation of security cameras and monitoring system for the City of Ashland for water treatment plan, Department of Engineering Utilities.
Any discussion?
I think I've added to that, is I'm really interested in seeing that we consider security cameras for some areas are hotspots for crime in our park. I know our police can't be everywhere, but if they were able to look at a closed circuit television and see if there's some bad actors in some areas that we don't want them at, that maybe that would help you all. I know budgets are tight, but I would really encourage the city to consider that, because I think it would be helpful to our police force.
How about cameras on the little library park, the library, you know, fountain area? Would that help us, Chief?
Anything will help, the only problem I have is, who monitors them?
Well, one thing about it, if something happens there, we've got a video of it.
That's absolutely correct, and that's another positive of having them, so, even though it's not watched, you know, somebody's not watching it live, we can at least go back, and we've had, we've had incidents there that we need that evidence, or we need that documentation, so.
Well, you can have, I'm sure the library would love to have a monitor inside, and, and not that somebody's sitting there staring at it, but, you know, from time to time, or they might hear a disturbance, or somebody might come into the library and say, something's going on out here.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the library has cameras that point into the commons, but I don't know how far they go.
Yeah, I've checked.
They're, they're at the angle, you know, they're kind of limited, but part of that too is, I would like, you know, if that would happen, that we would house the hardware and everything, that we could have that access under evidence control.
Sure. Okay, all favor? Aye. Close and like sign. Yeah? Out of M.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland amending ordinance number eight, four, series of two thousand seventeen, by adding blighted property to the ordinance which established criteria to classify property as abandoned and established a separate rate of taxation for abandoned urban property.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm glad we're taking steps towards handling our abandoned logic property.
Yes, if, if someone is taxed at four times the rate, what's the punishment beyond that if they do not pay their tax? What are we currently doing to those folks?
They have to be signed by the department first.
Once they're signed, what happens?
Well, it's a difference, Mr. Coleman, I thought you explained to me, we keep putting liens on property, we go clean it up, they're not going to pay it, they don't pay their tax, they're surely not going to pay us to clean it up, which they're not, but I thought you told me the caveat about putting a taxation on there, is it easier meant to go to court?
We have a better chance of, I mean, and I think the important thing to remember in all this is that it's, our efforts are not punitive, they're an effort to bring properties into compliance, and that's really it. And what we've learned is that the buying process isn't enough of a stick to swing to bring about twenty percent of our properties into compliance. So we look for ways to develop, I guess, a bigger stick, and I think this is it. It allows us to get a little more aggressive with these problem properties, again, the city manager can tell you he's gone through this several times, the, you know, it's three, at least, three or more citations in a twelve-month period without any efforts to comply with city codes, and we need to take action. And once we, once we attach that four, four times tax rate, it opens up some different avenues for us to go after or force compliance with the property that we currently don't have. Now, they're trying to provide a way to have a force on the back end.
Right, it gives us more opportunities to, for a club, something, it's not an inexpensive process, but it certainly will allow us to take, I guess, what you would describe as more drastic action as opposed to just trying to seek enforcement of fines. It would allow us to, with the tax process, treat it as, you know, like we do our regular unpaid city taxes here.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All favor? Aye. Close and like sign, out of G.
An ordinance of the City of Ashland amending section two of ordinance number one oh six, series of two thousand nine, which adopted the two thousand and nine edition and all subsequent editions of the International Property Maintenance Code, reducing the timeframe from ten days to one twenty-four hour period for the removal of items unregularly disposed of in household trash.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only, the only thing, the only question I've had here is if removing, so, I have rental property, and I am on vacation for seven days. And we have twenty-four hours to remedy the matter. And I don't know. What's, what's, what would be the, do I get fined, or?
There is a, there are, there is a fine schedule attached to this, Commissioner, and it is in line with the solid waste, current solid waste fine schedule, I'll pull it up.
So under this, so, so we go from ten days to get a citizen in compliance to twenty-four hours? Is, so we swing it from this way to this way, basically? And I, listen, I'm totally for getting properties cleaned up, I'm just worried about, are we giving the citizen enough time to remedy the matter? That's my only concern.
Is it not just a matter of calling and saying, I need a pickup at this place?
But there can be also disposal from a tenant, and I may not know it if I'm out of town. And then, I'm not in compliance for twenty-four hour notice, I'm just worried about the timeframe.
We'll give you pads on that.
Part of the challenge, and please chime in, Chris, with the code enforcement board mentality, is that people do dump on the street, it's there for a very long time, and a lot of the citizens that are around that area get very upset immediately.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, in the interim at times, the garbage department, because they are still efficient, excuse me, solid waste, will pick those things up, and a lot of, a lot of, a segment of our community will take, will use that.
Right.
And so this is an effort to try to get that off the street, I understand the board of commissioners, that's a great point. And potentially, I guess, we could relook the, the zone enforcement board could relook the timeline, because I think that is a, is an excellent point. But it is an effort because the dumping does go on quite a bit, and somebody else takes care of the problem, and the homeowner, the renter, is not held accountable.
And I make no mistake, I've had citizens reach out to me with that very concern.
Yeah, you and I have had conversations, my big.
And so I am absolutely in favor of reducing the timeframe it takes to get somebody in compliance. I'm just concerned that twenty-four hours is probably a little harsh, knowing you've got some good actors that would absolutely remedy with a adequate amount of time.
And I think the issue, as you well know, is that that problem, after, sometimes after a couple of hours, it's no longer just on that property, it's the winds blow, the pickers have come, and it's spread on everyone else's property. So it's not just an actual problem, it's a matter of that blooming out over several other properties.
What's your timeframe recommendation?
Well, I think, I think honestly, you know, five days is, I think, fair.
I'd say, oh, Brooklyn fair.
Yeah, but I think twenty, I think twenty-four hours is probably just.
We're going to fail some of these people, fail them.
Well, in my, and you can even do it so that, you know, maybe your initial opportunity, if you're in violation, is five days, but if you're a repeat offender, then you can have a shorter timeframe, that you get in compliance. If you're a bad actor, then you're going to be treated a little bit differently.
I don't know, I think, I think the twenty-four hour. I don't know. I think, I think the twenty-four hours, um, especially when it's as simple as, even as a landlord, you call solid waste and say, I need a pickup at this place.
That's assuming I know.
Right. Would you, would you not know?
If I'm out of town, I may not know.
Well, neighbors will know. I mean, I'm calling.
And I, again, it's, I think we're, the point is, I just, I'm worried twenty-four hours may be just a little too quick. That's all. And I, and you can, listen, I, I'm going to go along with, with whatever the court decides.
Uh, if I could just point out, just to counter that a little bit, man, I understand your position. Uh, it's a violation the first minute on the street.
Sure.
Uh, so we, you know, we want compliance the second minute.
Right. And it's like you said, your efforts is less punitive.
Right. Just to get compliance.
Right. Yeah.
This is going to make the papers and every landlord in the town is going to hear about this. I mean, it's going to be all over Facebook.
And we hope, yeah.
And everybody's going to be aware of it. You've got twenty-four hours. Let's try it. If it doesn't work, we'll amend it.
I guess the premise behind it is to sort of curb the, I'm going to clean up this rental house and everything's going to end up on the street.
Right. Get it out of the neighborhood too. They definitely want that done on the borders of the neighborhood.
Well, and, and Commissioner, you know, my office gets these calls every day.
Yeah.
And, and where it's piled up and, uh, you remember the most recent was pretty, up close to Putnam Stadium. And what happened, I mean, people called me, they live in the neighborhood, all in nice homes, very well kept. They said, you know, Mayor, the, I saw a truck come. I dumped more stuff on it. Had nothing to do with that property, but she saw a pile of refuse, so she just dumped on it. Yeah. I, there's probably not a magic figure. It's been ten days.
Yeah, which is too long.
That's crazy, but, uh.
Even three days.
I will add this. The way we typically work with any, uh, property maintenance violation is that if you contact us within that initial timeframe, uh, and give us your plan to, to remedy the problem.
I think that's.
We usually extend it out, but it's, it's.
Well, he, he ain't going to contact, he's running, going to contact anybody. The renter.
I will know about it till it's left.
They may have already just moved out on him while he was out of town. And there it is. I don't know the magic number and, and twenty-four. I, I could go with forty-eight hours. I mean, I, it's just two days, but I'm not, I'm not concerned with.
Our recommendation, Commissioner, to amend that to the.
And I, and I noticed that you did actually, the twenty-four hours is actually standard agreed policy nationwide. Is that what I'm looking at here?
Commissioner, you've got a good point. Everybody's going to know it. It's going to be involved in this. It got homeowners.
And it shows the city's taking a stand against blight. I get that.
We're trying to clean our town up.
Trust me, I get what you're doing and I'm for it. I'm just worried about that ten.
I wonder if Progen for it, you could make Progen. Progen for it. You complained about it from day one.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's pass it. Go from there. So move. All favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Just another effort to clean up our town and clean up neighborhoods for people who do follow the law. Out of H.
Orders of the City of Ashland authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Elkins Waste Services, Inc. for the removal and disposition of sludge from the City of Ashland wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant for a period of one year by the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Second.
I just have one question. Uh, how often do they pick it up?
In the wastewater treatment plant, it's twice a day and the water treatment, uh, water production is once a day. Is it annual contract or?
Vase it up?
Yes, wastewater.
And can you, can you mention to the public what the financial impact of that deed, of that would be?
The total cost?
Yeah. It's close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred fifty-three.
It's down.
It's down this year, less than.
It's, uh, no, the cost overall is three dollars less per tonne between, we pick up.
Something's going down?
Yeah.
That's in shock. Yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of.
Aye.
Orders of the City of Ashland authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Mike Inyard and Sons, Inc., for the installation of approximately six hundred and forty feet plus or minus a twelve inch VIP class fifty-six water main and a purchase of Louisa Street in Catholicsburg in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents for the Department of Engineering and Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
No motion?
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of J.
Orders of the City of Ashland authorizing approving change order number one between the City of Ashland and Tri-State Construction and Enterprise LLC, increasing the contract amount by four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the contract for the City of Ashland's new water distribution and wastewater collection facility.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Out of K.
Appointment, uh, to the Ashland boy county airport board for a four-year term to begin December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen and expire on December fourteenth, two thousand and one for Philip Montague.
No motion?
So move. Second.
Uh, Blue Gun, you know, a long time member that will pass away, uh, valuable, valued citizen in, in so many ways, but he really kept track of that. When I was mayor before, he contacted me all the time and I'd go to meetings down there and, and, uh, the, at least our other member came in to see me and, um, said that Philip Montague would be willing to serve. I thought Philip was down. All right. He's a great guy, smart guy. He'll do a good job on that airport board. The mayor gets a point to, the county judge points to, and the Green County judge points to. That's the makeup of the board. So, uh, Philip will be an excellent representative for us. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion out. Nobody talk about?
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, it's not on the, the agenda. It's for discussion purposes only.
Okay.
It concerns a, uh, a deal on a sign, a planner fitness.
Yeah. I, I did talk with Mr. Colton about this. His plan fitness is going in next to.
Coker?
Is that right? And they, uh, I first read this, I was thinking of a billboard sign, which, uh, one of my favorites. But this is actually on the, on the, now, your picture on that, that's mine though.
Okay.
I like that. But, um, it goes on the face of the building and it comes up, it's, I guess it's made, it comes up above the building a little bit. It's a fancy sign. Yeah, you got a picture up there. So when, when you see the square feet, you're thinking, the difference is pretty huge, but it's on the front of the building. No, I, I don't have a problem. We do this from time to time, but we have to see this time, see what effect it's going to have on other buildings and most definitely signs that go up on the side of the road, what effect that's going to have. So we'll, I guess.
They cut the red tape moment, in my opinion.
The commission can have you put an ordinance together for the next meeting. I'm certain. Chris, is that right? That enough?
We're just.
Sign it, Phil?
Excuse me?
For sign it, Phil?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
We have no problem. We're glad you're here.
Absolutely. Your investment is important to us and anything we can do to make it good for you all, good for every business. Thank you, your business, Ashland.
I got a flyer in the mail today. It's from you. Thinking about joining, but I avoided it by going to Cadillac and my fans.
We'll pay Commissioner Good's first month membership.
There you go.
Keep me going in this, in this area. Welcome to that area, everybody. Glad you're going to be there. Okay, uh, motion going executive session to discuss potential litigation. So move.
Second.
For record, if we go in at twenty to two, uh, no action will be taken. That'll be the last board of.
Uh, only litigation matters were discussed and no actions taken. We, we have any further business?
Mayor, I have a motion, please. Um, I'd like for us to seek a court injunction against the housing of sex offenders within one thousand feet of the school facility known as Alumni Gym.
Second. Is that a form of motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
You have something else?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to proceed to pursue litigation against a local business to recover taxes due upon the sale of the business.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Merry Christmas, everybody.